Item B. And under executive session, a new item B, negotiation strategy, MEA and AFSMI. So with those changes, I would accept the September 21st agenda. Maureen, do we have anyone for citizen speak? Okay. Superintendent's report, Superintendent Gormly.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. I'd like to invite Milton High School Assistant Principal Ben Kelly to the table. And per a request that Chairman Walker had made before and Member Verella had asked at the last meeting, Dr. Angela Burke wasn't able to join us tonight, but she gave some input. And Assistant Superintendent Sheehan did a tremendous amount of work with Ben Kelly and several members of the Milton Public School Administrative Staff and has prepared, I think, more than you asked for, Member Verella. But very informative for the school committee and the viewing public. So I thought about this, I didn't know whether Assistant Superintendent Sheehan should move over next to Ben Kelly. I've never really seen that before.
I think she can operate from her normal seat.
Sounds good.
Ben, you're part of the presentation. Welcome, and thank you for giving up this night. Assistant Superintendent Sheehan?
Thank you, Superintendent Gormly. And as was just noted, Mr. Kelly and I are presenting on behalf of Dr. Angela Burke, our Educational Technology Director. And we thought first that we would just give a little background about our communication systems. First, what is a student information system? When you made an inquiry about EdLine and Gradebook, these are all part of student information or linked to student information systems. So generally districts select some kind of an information system. The one that we use is, you'll hear it referred to as Reddicker or Administrators Plus. These systems manage student information. They provide access for administrators and teachers from school and home, provide access to grade books, offer parents, guardians, information about student grades, schedules, important announcements. Systems can track attendance, and they also allow for scheduling and master scheduling. There are many, many more features in these student information systems. And while this is, these are typical features of these systems, we do not access all of those in our particular system. But that's generally what they can do. So how do we currently utilize our student information system, which is Administrators Plus or Reddicker? So currently, the system is used by our administrators, our administrative assistants, our business office staff. Additionally, again, it's to manage student information, student data. Our guidance and office staff use the system to generate report cards at the middle and high school levels. And it should be noted that the report card information is actually uploaded to our student information system from another system that is known as GradeQuick, which is what is currently being used, other than those who are participating in the pilot, pilot program, which we will be talking about. So what can our Administrators Plus do for us? When it's fully implemented and with teacher training, it has multiple capabilities. It can provide access to a teacher portal, similar to EdLine, where teachers can post a syllabus, information about their classes, assignments and links to other resources. This teacher portal is similar to how we're using EdLine right now. But again, there are increased capabilities of the Administrators Plus system. It can also allow teachers to maintain an online grade book. When we say that it speaks directly to our student information system, it means that they don't have to, if they use GradeBook versus the current GradeQuick program, they can access the student data. It's already in the system. Again, we have to upload all of that information into GradeQuick currently, which is a part of the EdLine system. So what can, what can the system do for us? Continued, in addition to a teacher portal, there is actually a student portal as well as a parent portal. So parents can be given access through a login for classroom and student information. Can also provide access to parents to check grades, progress reports and report cards after a grading period. So again, some of the, there are many similarities between EdLine and Administrators Plus. But again, all of the data would be in one place and everyone could access much more easily. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kelly.
Sure. So I'll speak to one piece that we're using currently at the high school and as well at the middle school. Because we're not tapping into every option that our student information system has available to us, that's the Admin Plus, we're currently using three different systems to manage all of the tasks that we need to do. Administrators use Administrators Plus as the backend and the data warehouse. Teachers use GradeQuick to enter grades, track and send grades off to myself and our Director of Guidance to generate report cards. And EdLine is a third system that we use to communicate with homes, with families, with students. EdLine is able to communicate fairly well with our Administrators Plus program. And they have been working fairly well for as long as I've been here. Communicating together is not as easy as a one-to-one system where we have everything under the same umbrella. There is a lot of work required on the backend by many different people, myself included, Dr. Angela Burke, Karen Cahill, principals who work in the buildings, to make sure that we can continuously upload, send and receive information between the different systems. So there is a time expense here to continue to manage these three different systems and make sure they work together. What we use EdLine for currently at Milton High School, all students and parents have access to EdLine through their own accounts, which is something we set up each year with student schedules. Those accounts remain active for the students' stay at Milton High School. And both students and parents can log in to see all of their classes, see course syllabi, assignments, links, different information that teachers will post. To be perfectly frank, EdLine is a bit antiquated. It is a, basically a file storage system. It's not the most user-friendly website from either the teacher's end or the person visiting the site. However, teachers have been successful in getting up the information they need in a file system. And many students do take advantage, and parents as well. I can tell when they're calling to be, you know, have their password reset or something, that some parents and students are using this program to access information. So how is EdLine currently being used? At the middle and high school, you can log in again to see syllabus, course description, grading policy and homework, all of which teachers are required to post on the system. Parents and guardians can access school calendar and district forms, which are in different folders on the main page. They can also navigate to their students' individual class pages. And teachers provide monthly updates on curriculum, special projects, activities, announcements. It also does have the ability for teachers to contact all parents or all students in that class, provided that the parents and students have signed up for their EdLine accounts and have active accounts. In addition to EdLine, we also use another system for mass communication, which I'm sure many of you have gotten from us, Blackboard Connect, which we've been using over the past year. And Blackboard Connect allows us to target specific audiences that we're looking for to send either voice messages or email messages along with attached documents, which we've been using with some success. But you could say that that is now a fourth system that we're using to manage communication with families and homes.
So is it feasible to phase out EdLine and utilize other resources readily available? Would it be more cost-effective? And are we considering other options? And the answers to those questions is yes to all. So additional communication tools, tools in addition to EdLine that we're seeing used throughout the district are teacher newsletters. Many teachers have created online blogs. They use a communication system called Edmodo. There's ClassDojo, which is very interesting to see in the classroom. It's more of a classroom management program. And there's actually an app for parents, so they can be connected to the classroom. Teachers can send, they can send videos of what's happening in the classroom. They can keep parents informed of how students are rewarded for positive behaviors and positive responses to activities in the classroom during the day. It is a, actually, I would say throughout, in classrooms throughout the nation, this ClassDojo is really a very, I'd say, a very, very popular program around class management. And now we're, you know, hearing about it's linked to social emotional learning and classroom communities and so forth. Some teachers are using Twitter, the Blackboard Connect, as Mr. Kelly just mentioned. And just to, the last two items here, Google Classroom and Gradebook are, the Google Classroom has been an initiative that we are working towards in the district. We have about half of our teachers using Google Classroom. It is a web-based blended learning platform. And by blended learning, we mean that students are sort of interfacing with programs and activities electronically or they are also interfacing with their classroom teachers. So they're learning through two different modes. And we're continuing to work with teachers, but we are very pleased that we have as many teachers as we do who are interested in Google Classroom. They're in different places on the continuum of learning and feeling comfortable about using it. Dr. Burke is working with individual teachers. She's working with groups of teachers to become more confident in using Google Classroom. If you see it in action, and parents can see it in action at home, if the teacher is providing feedback to a student who's working on an assignment, the teacher can actually provide feedback while the child is working on the assignment at home. She can do the same thing in the classroom, but it is really a, it's like immediate feedback for the student and a very highly motivating tool for teachers and students. So we added this, Dr. Burke had this testimony from a teacher who is on the academic support staff. And at one time, a teacher in that position would have to connect with all of the teachers, go to the individual classroom and sit down and talk about the student and the assignments and how they can provide specialized instruction. And with Google Classroom, this teacher reported to Dr. Burke that it has really changed things for him. He can access all of the syllabus for each class, the assignments, announcements, all in one place. He just signs up for those individual classrooms and he can plan accordingly. We have another tool that some teachers are using, and it's called PlanbookEDU. And that also allows our specialist teachers or academic support staff to access the lesson plans of the teachers with whom they work. And teachers are finding that very helpful. The difference between accessing the plans and something like Google Classroom is that there's more information that would be, that can be accessed by the academic support staff. So, Mr. Kelly?
Before moving on to Gradebook, if I could add one thing about Google Classroom, our staff is also finding Google Classroom to be a very helpful tool for collaboration in the school. So we have different classrooms set up for different purposes, including a high school administrative team classroom where we can communicate, share documents and do some things that we haven't previously been able to do. We're also finding with Google Apps that are attached to the Google Classroom, especially Google Drive, we're finding that we can share securely documents and have them be in a safe, secure cloud-based storage for Milton PS access only. And we can determine that access as needed. So we found it to be very helpful on the teacher and administrative side as well. Teacher Plus Gradebook. So I spoke a little bit about EdLine, which is one of the three main systems that we use to communicate with families. EdLine does a lot of the communication with curriculum. GradeQuick has been the program that we have used previously for teachers to input data, grades, and then communicate that data as we'll then pull them for report cards. So one of the things that we've been looking to do is try to get rid of the number of different systems that we have in place and all the things that have to talk to each other. And one of the ways to simplify is to start to use Reddicker's own Gradebook program, which is called Teacher Plus Gradebook, and it's something that we already own. Teacher Plus Gradebook is currently in a pilot at the high school. We have about 40 teachers and administrators who have signed on to do some additional work this year. And so far, we've had a lot of success by creating these usernames and passwords for those who are interested. And we're finding that teachers are finding this to be a very easy to use, a user-friendly program that also has features that our old program, GradeQuick, just doesn't have. So Teacher Plus Gradebook, what is it? It's an easy-to-use web-based gradebook that's integrated with Administrators Plus Student Information System. It offers many features to improve teacher access, data entry and data analysis, and eventually can include a parent-plus portal to facilitate home communication. In addition to a parent-plus portal, it can also have student access so that parent and students in the future will be able to directly access their gradebooks and see individual assignments as well as progress reports and report cards. In the future, I'm looking at this as a giant time saver for many people, both on the backend and for teachers fielding questions about individual grades. So who's using this Teacher Plus Gradebook right now? Again, we have a pilot running of about 40 staff members, 39 from Milton High School and one from the Pierce, to see how it's going to be working for them. So the idea is to get our pilot into full use at Milton High School this year. And so far, we are, we think we are on track to do that. On the backend of things, we've been running some tests in the main office to make sure that our systems are still talking to each other. As you can imagine, it's kind of an interesting position to be in where we have 40 staff members using Teacher Plus Gradebook and 60 staff members using a program called GradeQuick. At the end of the day, I need to be able to see their attendance, whether they're using one program or the other. I need to be able to see their grades. So far, we've had a lot of success and we're not losing any data. So I say that with hesitant optimism that this program is going very well. This week, I have actually had three teachers taking attendance exclusively with the new Teacher Plus Gradebook as part of a sub-pilot to the pilot. And we're finding that it's actually going even easier for our administrative assistants to pull that attendance than the old program was. And that's the way it was supposed to be, it was booked that way. So we are excited to open this up now to the 40 participants in our pilot to start saying, if you would like to start taking attendance, let's take one more step forward. And we'll use this new program. And we'll be running a test on Friday of this week, mock poll of our progress reports, which typically come out every five weeks to ensure that everything is talking together and that this Teacher Plus Gradebook is working as advertised with our student information system. Based on the success of this week and the rest of the pilot, we're going to determine a timeline this year for getting the entire staff on board and making the switch to Teacher Plus Gradebook, again, which we already own as part of Reddicker software. And then make a timeline for determining when we will start to give access to students and parents so they can check their grades in real time.
So we thought we would include how we're communicating student progress at the elementary level. We're very excited about standards-based reporting system. It was piloted in kindergarten last year. And in grades one through five, we'll be offering standards-based reporting this year. We have a lot of communication ahead of us to familiarize parents with this system of reporting. We have invested in a new online report card maker. It's through a company called ClearVision that is generating the new standards-based report cards for us. I will tell you that we did attempt to create a report card through Administrators Plus. Many of these student information systems do a better job with the middle and high school report cards. And they are not that user-friendly with the elementary schools. And while they, they, you know, say that they will work with you and develop a card, we found another system that we think for now is something that is, best suits our needs. I think in time, the student information systems will accommodate elementary reporting in a better way. So Dr. Burke actually put this together for us. If we phase out EdLine, where will information be housed? And it's just a view of the different areas where we can access information and communicate. There is some overlap. There are things that we're doing in Google Classroom that can also be featured in Administrators Plus. And there will continue to be overlap as teachers sort of experiment with different communication tools. And, I mean, we encourage that kind of innovation. We are looking for consistency around, you know, keeping student data and having access to data for data analysis and so forth. But there will be, there will be some overlap. So next steps, we are, we will be assessing the effectiveness of the Gradebook pilot. And I think you could tell from what Mr. Kelly reported that it is, the Gradebook is being met with much enthusiasm right now. And we anticipate that for the middle school, there will be equal enthusiasm in time. So we are, we're looking to phase out GradeQuick and EdLine to fully implement Gradebook at Milton High School this year and Pierce Middle School next year. We're looking to maximize the use of our Administrators Plus modules, the data sharing and for increased engagement of our parents, students and staff. And I believe that that is our primary goal in making some of these changes is to allow more access for parents and guardians. So we also will need to provide professional development to support staff in utilizing these communication tools and improving communication. And also, we believe, will be enhancing student achievement. And finally, we continue to encourage innovation by our staff. So that's where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Crigg?
I have a couple of questions. On the slide of how EdLine is currently being used, the only thing that I, I might have missed it in your presentation, but the only thing that I didn't see addressed in what the news, well, the Admin Plus system could do is the final bullet on that slide. A mass notification system allows for communication between school and home via email or telephone that you were using for Blackboard Connect. Is that in Admin Plus?
There is, Admin Plus does have the capability. So actually, this mass notification system that we use now, Blackboard Connect, is part of EdLine. So Blackboard owns EdLine and this notification system. But the Administrators Plus does have the ability to provide us with a mass notification system. But Bob Patterson, our Technology Director, has told us that the system we're using is actually better. So again, that is something, that is a piece of, that is part of the, one of the features of Administrators Plus that we feel still needs to be developed.
Okay. And my other-
So some systems do use it, but Bob's, in Bob's opinion, we shouldn't make the switch yet.
Yeah, okay. Which sort of brings me to my second question, which is, under the final slide, under next steps, phase out GradeQuick and EdLine, which is what this is all about. But do you have any sort of timeline or goal for the phase out?
I think for, for the high school, our goal is to fully implement the new Teacher Plus Gradebook this year. So that would, if all goes well in the coming weeks and we find that everything is the way we need it to be and we've kind of molded Gradebook to be the way we need it to be, our goal is to have 100% of staff using it this year. That is not going to get rid of EdLine this year. That's only going to get rid of one of the two systems, GradeQuick. Moving forward, then we can start to tap into some of the other features of Administrators Plus and open up a teacher portal and student portal, which then will replace EdLine. So kind of a two-step. And this year, we're really hoping to do step one very well.
And so to Mr. Kelly's point, if this is successful, more successful than we thought it was going to be quickly, we could open up some parent portals, it was discussed, halfway through the year, just to make sure that it works. And then we have a representative from the MEA who is on the committee and doing it at Pierce School. And so the success of this at the high school will then push our PS implementation. And then, to your point, which might be the elementary, at another meeting, working around the chair, we're going to bring the elementary team. It's going to take a tremendous amount of education around the standards-based report card that you've, you know, it's going to be huge for the town of Milton and the public schools, going to three times a year. But a tremendous amount of work has been done with the staff. And now we want to start at the school committee, the PTOs, informational meetings, because this is the ultimate partnership between the parents and the school on this new standards base. So we're going to do a presentation for you around the standards-based report card.
Thank you.
At the elementary.
So I just have a quick question. I know you're using the technology and people love technology, I mean, we live in that society. But how, how do you manage the piece for people that are not, for parents and for families that are not so tech savvy? For people whose English is not their first language? How are you, because technology is wonderful, but so much of education is the human piece. And I'm just wondering how that all factors in here? All of this is wonderful, but how do you, have you found that reaching out to people who are not, to families that are not so tech savvy or to people who English is not their first language? How, how are you managing that with all of this technology? It may not be that accessible for certain families, for certain people. I'm just wondering, long-term, how does that look for you? Because while it's all wonderful, like they have this saying in early childhood, there's no app for your lap in terms of keeping that human factor and reading to children. So that piece, it's wonderful. That's the world we live in, I get that, but I'm just sort of curious about that piece.
So right now, we have identified the families and the schools who do not have access to technology. So we, we send hard copies to those families and make sure that the school offices communicate, the principals communicate as they need to with those families. I know that in the different schools, there have been attempts to offer, you know, extra time in the computer labs for students who may not have access at home. So there have been, you know, a number of, I'd say, efforts to reach out in that way. But as far as, you know, future planning, I think that it's a, it's a very good question. And I do think it's something that we need to be mindful of as we increase the number of communication tools that are electronic. So I think it's a good question.
For myself, I'm a semi-tech person, but there are times when it overwhelms me a little bit. And so I'm thinking about early, I'm thinking about your elementary parents and just thinking about that education piece for them and for the whole community that we don't want to take that human factor out as we move towards all of these pieces. I think it's wonderful. Make life easier on administrative part, that's for sure. Much more accountable and you have good data.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
A quick question. I can't remember off the top of my head what the contract says about teacher participation. I know it was EdLine before, but where are we at with that in terms of our expectations around teachers using this?
So it is fully viable for parents and kids?
So the, the contract does provide, I guess you could say, sort of minimal requirements for-
for, for communicating through EdLine, posting of, so there are, there are different expectations at high school, middle school, and, and the elementary level. So at the, at the high school and middle school level, and Mr. Kelly, please correct me if I'm wrong, teachers expected, are expected to post the syllabus for their classroom, homework assignments. They are supposed to have links to resources. At the elementary level, teachers are also to have links to resources, post an overview of the curriculum. Any programs or events or special projects are supposed to be posted, and they're supposed to be updated regularly. And those administrators who are supervising teachers are responsible for seeing to it that they meet those requirements. However, we, while, while that is still part of the contract, it is also noted in the contract that we should be innovative and explore other options and tools for communication. So that leaves things open for, for a pilot such as gradebook. And, and what we're seeing is that teachers are going far beyond the requirements of EdLine, using other tools. And we have, we have our Director of Educational Technology, Dr. Burke, who is, who is, who is in the schools every day and working with teachers every day, and I, I believe has a very good handle on what is happening in the classrooms around the integration of technology. Now, the, the parent communication tool, I think, is, 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 is an important goal that we have. And we, we don't have, other than what we just discussed about a timeline for implementation for parents to access grades and, and progress reports and so forth, we, we have a general, you know, a general idea in mind about the timeline, should all go smoothly with this. And we are very encouraged. But, but I think that there have been many, many changes and additions to ways that the teachers are communicating, even since our last discussion of EdLine.
But it was, if I might, it was a desire by, I shouldn't speak for the school committee, the Pierce School Committee, for this gradebook and for parents to be able to see the grades. And so we could tell you that the pilot wasn't going well and we were going to try another system. It couldn't be going any better. And if the success continues, again, opening the parent portal, making sure, you know, that it's going to succeed moving into Pierce, it's on target. You know, we could say to you, September 1st, we just told everybody they were going to use the open grade, open, the parent, the gradebook for parents. We're going to make sure that it, we succeed and it's a positive roll-up. But that was important to this school committee, and that's why we're presenting tonight, and that's why, that's why the gradebook pilot is going on.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Absolutely.
So, and, and I am in no way about Big Brother or, you know, you must do this, but I know in my field, we do data collection electronically, and then the person who's doing that can tell who opened their data and who didn't. It's a little creepy, but it gets the point across of, you gotta be doing this. So I don't know if this provides that, if we want that, is that Angela Burke's job? Like, if we expect it, what's that saying, you have to inspect it? So if we're expecting it, how do we know what's happening?
Do you want to address that, Ben?
Sure. So as far as the Teacher Plus gradebook, this is, you know, we're trying to think about it almost as Coke and Pepsi. We have our GradeQuick and we're trying to move to a gradebook. So at the end of the day, teachers are responsible for making sure they have, to the principal's expectations, enough grades sufficient to produce their final grades. So in that case, we can certainly tell when teachers have posted grades, and we can certainly tell when deadlines are met for report cards and progress reports, and we have those conversations if need be. But as far as a new expectation, this is really just a new product from a new vendor that has some additional features, but it shouldn't change too much on the grade input end. On the EdLine end, speaking to your previous question a little bit-
I'm so sorry.
You know, EdLine, we still have those minimal expectations and we are checking them as, as Assistant Superintendent Sheehan said, supervisors are checking that those expectations are met. So we can certainly log in from that end. However, in the spirit of a transitional time in terms of technology, we have many teachers who, if you log into their EdLine pages, have not met the requirements. However, they have a link to their Google Classroom, where right from there, you can see that they have gone above and beyond on a different platform. And that is something that, as an administrative team, we are fully supporting, because the, the information is there and they are trying to be innovative in a new way that can communicate better with students. So we can certainly tell who's done what, and, and we're really liking to see that in most cases, the teachers here are going well beyond those minimal EdLine requirements that were written in whatever year that was.
Thank you.
Ms. Varela?
First of all, thank you for this, because it's, it's really, it's really a good update to sort of where you're at and, and where your go-forward looks to be going. So here's a couple of questions I have. In this, this, this page here with our three columns of, you know, when we phase out EdLine, where will, how will the information look and where it will be housed and where does everyone go to either post or look for, for information intel? So my question, so here's my question. I noticed that it says the parent portal would be in Administration, would be Administration Plus. The PTO pages would be on the webpage, like MiltonPS.org, where that PTO info used to always be on EdLine, right? And then my question is for like the early grade levels, which, you know, I'm a big proponent, and this is just me, that, you know, and, you know, it's starting in fifth grade at all, you know, in, in middle and high, that homework assignments and things like that, that's the, you know, the student's responsibility. But I know at an earlier level, when you go on the EdLine page where students can get their spelling lists, or when is the next exam, or when is the big next class project, that parents can do that. So, so my question is, well, first of all, with, with this ideal, ideal world of this is where everything will be housed, and would it be at all realistic to say, like, not the end of next year, but the year after, like, in two years, this will all be smoothed out and moving forward in an ideal world? I'm not saying it's going to happen, but is that like a realistic goal? That these three columns will all be happening?
I need to be very careful how I answer.
No, I know that. But I mean, I'm not saying it'll be there, but is that like maybe a goal? That in maybe two years, this is what Milton Public Schools looks like?
Sure. I think in broad terms, a goal of, of using the system that we have and tapping into all of its features as quickly as possible and as successfully as possible is absolutely our goal. And I think that benefits the biggest number of people. However, I, I think that we want to be very careful as a school team here to make sure that in the transition, we don't lose anything, whether that's, you know, a single absence from some class being reported in the morning to a PTO page on an EdLine that people still have an active link to.
Right.
So we need to be very careful how we do it. A lot of what is currently on EdLine, as you explore different pages, again, it's a glorified file system. There's a lot more that could be on the MiltonPS.org webpage, which is actually a much better-built webpage than many of the EdLine pages that schools have. So whether it's just redirecting things, I just, I have to be very careful to say for the entire district that in two years, it'll be there.
Yeah, I hear you.
But I'll tell you how fast you're pushing this, is that when we started to look at it all, we realized our webpage is, Glenn, more than 10 years old. So we had Jack Rabbit here in Milton who created it in the other day. And they're going to use the next six months to survey parents, to survey teachers. And they said that our webpage is a lot better than many school districts, and they're going to recreate, build, Glenn? They're going to build a new webpage. And so interactive, what, what are parents looking for? What do teachers want to communicate?
Can I do a follow-up? The other thing that I think is lacking and would be really helpful, I know this echoes like a query at the last EdLine update, or it might have been an offline conversation that I had with Dr. Donahue, and this also is going to support what Ms. Everhart said. But, but part of the reason, you know, sometimes communication is not good, EdLine is not, as you said, it's horrifically user-friendly, right? And you, you know, every year you have to reregister and nobody really helps you, and it's like, I am, I'm bothering you on the phone, being like, hey, what's my password? And, I mean, it's just, to me, it's archaic, it's ridiculous. So I think a big part that would help too, is yearly, maybe at the middle school, that at open house night, or even having an additional open house night, you need to educate the parents like you're doing here, go, okay, for this year, even as you're, even as you're moving in your phase, this year, this is where you find everything. And this is how you access it. And make it, make it less intimidating, less overwhelming, show them how easy it is, show them where to find it. So I have a junior now, right, who's been here since the early days of her education. No one has ever done that for me. Nobody. And I love you guys and you're great, whatever. No one has ever said, let's have an information night, and this is how you utilize EdLine, like everything you've done for us here. And that could easily be like put into the fall PTO meeting. You have Dr. Burke, or you, or someone come in and do it. Or, you know, I know Dr. Spalding has hordes of open house nights, like sixth grade information night and transfer student information night. All that stuff would be really helpful, you know, to, to, and have the, the handouts, just so the parent, because it's so overwhelming and just saying, well, you go here, you go here, and you go here. Even, even the Google Classroom, I think it's great, and all my kids' teachers are using it more and more. But again, if you're not too, I'm just saying, and I, I am not non-tech friendly, but again, for parents who are not tech-friendly, all of it is overwhelming and it's confusing, and you don't know where to go to get the intel you need to get. So I, I think this is great, but a big piece of it that you need to do is, is have, and then even have an information night. And if parents don't come, like at high school night or whatever, then that's their fault. But it should be offered so that it's there and it's like, people like you can walk them through it, they can ask as many questions. And I think that moving forward, all of this will gel and jive and move forward in a more user-friendly fashion for the parent community to the school as well. So, anyway, but thank you.
Assistant Superintendent Sheehan?
May I, thank you, thank you for those suggestions. But I also wanted to add, when you were talking about the, you know, how, how we might organize information, this is a projection based on what we know now. And as I said, because there's overlap, we, there could be changes. It might be that, that we might, we might see something that's in Google Classroom that we think would, would work better in Administrators Plus, or just allow, allow both, both platforms to, to provide access.
Right.
For parents, students, or teachers. But, but, you know, the way things are changing with technology, we could be, we could be here a year from now and say, Google Classroom is passe, for all we know. So, you know, it's, it's fascinating, it's exciting, but that is innovation and change, and that's, that's the world we're in right now.
Absolutely. But that's why I think yearly, if like each, if each school had, where are we now? Like, you're right. But that would help with this, what do we do? I don't know where to go, I don't know where to get the information. Yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Donahue?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Excellent presentation. Since we're offering suggestions, mine was going to be that when you have the, the high school students register, reregister, that you immediately log them in to the student information system, and you give them their password and their, their usual ID. And that way, there are no excuses for, you know, oh, no one ever told me how to do it, that it's, you know, you bring your health records and, so, anyway, there's my suggestion. So I'm thrilled that you're getting buy-in from the teachers and the administrators, and that, that is, that's probably more than half the battle. And the other more than half the battle is the buy-in from the parents on the user end. So I'll be interested to see as, as things sort of roll out over the next year or so, what the feedback is from the PTOs and the parents, and how user-friendly things are to access, and how, how we can help facilitate their accessing of the information. My other comment is, is building off my colleague, member Everhart's, comments, was that in addition to sort of looking out for the, the families who are in, on one end of the technology spectrum, I think we have to also keep in mind our families on the other end of the technology spectrum who are on Twitter and are on, you know, Facebook 24/7. And, you know, we need to, we need to not, to the extent possible, feed into that sort of online, all-the-time mentality and that when you do your professional development, when you talk to your, your teachers and your administrators about developing curriculum and posting it and, and communicating with the students, that, you know, you sort of make it clear that, you know, you're not gonna, your students aren't going to gain some advantage by being on Twitter at, you know, 1:30 in the morning, you know, checking out some, some probably excellent video that, or YouTube, something that their teacher sent out to them, that we sort of need to guard their, their emotional and wellbeing, their emotional health wellbeing. So I think that's an important piece as well. And my other sort of macro comment is for all of us here, when we go out and we engage the vendors, that we really emphasize the need for student privacy. Because, you know, all, all of this information is being collected and stored by, by Google and, and wherever. And I'm sure we have commitments from them that they will, you know, maintain our, our students' privacy to industry standards, but when we have conversations with them, we need to, to push them on what those industry standards are and to make sure that, you know, macro data for our, our high school seniors isn't somehow, you know, being sold on the back end or utilized in ways that we don't intend, which I'm sure it's not. But, you know, we need to, we need to safeguard our, our students' privacy. And I think that's all that I had. But I, I think you do an excellent job. And this is, this is not an easy task, you know, because of all the different platforms you have. And, you know, if, if someone made a perfect system, you know, they'd be a millionaire or billionaire. So.
I'm thinking about that.
A few students.
If you have an idea, give me a call. You can go in on it together, but yeah. So, good job.
Dr. Craigitt?
Just to jump off of something that Dr. Donahue just said, it occurred to me when we were going through this, that at one point in the presentation, it said something about teachers being able to look at students' work even when they weren't at school. And so I think just as students need to not be on 24/7, that it's, it's just something that, that I think should be made clear from the outset, that these tools should not be about demanding more time from the teachers who need their own downtime to recharge. And that Google Classroom isn't about extending the classroom into the teachers' home lives and time that they definitely need to be doing other things.
So thank you. This is helpful information. And I'm, as a result, excited about the future, and as you said, cautiously optimistic. So, a couple of questions, and these are really for Assistant Superintendent Sheehan and Superintendent Gormly, but feel free to jump in if you want. If, if we follow the history of this discussion, which has been two years in running, the real objective, or at least a very important one, was trying to ensure that parents had access to all of the information that they needed. So my question, it's still not clear to me what the answer to that question is. So if I draw on your student information system slide and your EdLine slide, I, I think our objective was to offer parents, as you say here, and guardians, important information about grades, student schedules, announcements, and bringing in EdLine homework, test results, course content. So my question is this, at the elementary level, at the middle school level, and at the high school level, what's, how much of that information is available to parents now? And where is it available? So I hope we can answer that question tonight, and then I have one I'd like you to report back on next week. So anyone want to take a stab at that?
Happy to answer for the high school level.
Okay.
At the high school level, all parents receive progress reports every five weeks and report cards on the opposite five weeks, but every end of the term. So a paper and electronic copy is mailed home. Those are the minimum requirements that we have of teachers to communicate the grades, unless a student's grade has gone below a C-, in which case we've asked them to contact them directly. In addition, we have some teachers that go above and beyond and have found ways to use both-
Just to be clear, on grades below C-, contact them directly and immediately?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Especially within two weeks. We have a clause, within two weeks of the end of the term, absolutely immediately. Um, many of our teachers go above and beyond, however, and have found, um, a nice feature from our GradeQuick, our current, you know, grade system, uh, that allows them to actually send progress reports to EdLine by student, so that parents can log in and see more updated progress reports. However, that's never been a requirement, and not all teachers use it, and not all teachers have been trained to do it. Um, so that is something that we're hopeful that the new system will make of much easier. It's actually kind of a difficult process to do, um, but some teachers have been doing that. Other teachers simply print out progress reports, uh, send them home in PDF versions, uh, post them with random numbers in the classroom, and try to communicate grades that way. Uh, but we're hopeful that the new system can allow us to post progress reports in much more frequent intervals, which is part of our goal in this pilot.
So, the frequency right now for progress reports is five, every five weeks?
Five weeks.
May I ask a spin-off question of that before he keeps going? So, when this, um, when the pilot is successfully fully implemented, and the parent portal is open, uh, parents will be able, and students will be able to see their grades.
Yes.
And, um, in the discussions I've had, that will eliminate the need for progress reports.
Yes. I think if, uh, in discussions we've had as an administrative team, I don't think, um, we're thinking it will replace report cards. We still want those hard copies to go home. But it certainly will eliminate the need to send those, um, five-week progress reports to everybody. Of course, we'll mail them to those who need them, and those who request them, those who we do not have email addresses on file for, et cetera. Um, but it'll definitely eliminate some of that time and some of that process.
And, and if I might, the high, the Milton public schools across the district, um, one of the strengths is the communication with families, um, when they anticipate students are at risk of failing. And so, um, obviously, some of those get to my level, and the first thing we talk about is, when was the, uh, parent communicated with? And, uh, the Milton Public School teachers, uh, have a strength that Mr. Kelly referred to, about, um, communicating with parents at a mid-time.
Uh, Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I have a follow-up to your question. In terms of what we have now, and where we're going, one of the big complaints for a while ago, and I think, well, anyway, it's been an issue, is homework isn't posted. And so, if you think about that for a kid who's out one day, okay, but you think about kids that are out with the flu, or something more serious, or, you know, that's, to me, even more immediate than progress reports. Because if kids are sitting there trying to look up their homework, and they're much more savvy than we are, and they can't find it, I'm not gonna be able to find it. So, I guess I'm curious where we are now with that, and is that a priority? I would hope that that would be a priority going forward.
Sure. So, two quick comments on that. First, in the EdLine expectations, as part of the contract, I believe the term is a general description of homework. So, we do not have a requirement for all teachers that they post nightly assignments. Uh, many still post it on their board, or communicate it in some other way. So, you're right, every, you cannot find, um, every homework assignment for every teacher on EdLine currently. One of the things that we are hopeful that the new program will allow us to do, is if I go in as a teacher, and I post an assignment to my own gradebook, there is an option that with one click, I can send that assignment to the student portal and parent portal. So, as soon as those are opened up, and we've explored them, and we know it's all working, a parent could go in and immediately see, now that I've got a column set up that I'm anticipating an assignment, you will now see what that assignment is, and so will your student with their access. So, again, going to one system, that's the kind of integration that we can have, um, again, as long as everything works seamlessly.
I would love to see that as a priority going forward.
Let me just, Ms. Varela, let me just drill down, because I thought we were in the middle of answering my question.
Well, that's what I, yeah, all right, that's my one second.
So, and this, this is exactly what Member Bagley-Jones was saying. So, right now, um, homework and test results are not available to parents. That information's not available to parents.
Not in real time, and not by assignment, no.
And it's, it, it hasn't been my experience, at least for the parents that I've talked to over the years, that, um, that it's communicated quickly enough that a student's performance has taken a downward turn. So, if you're not getting test results, you're not getting information about homework, um, in five weeks, you, you could have gone into a downward spiral that's pretty dramatic and hard to get out of. So, I, I think we need to do something about that.
If I might, there aren't many teachers that, um, don't post the homework, you know, starting...
On, on EdLine?
No, on the board. And, um, students have all sorts of different, uh, teachers have all different vehicles. To some teachers, I've watched, check, uh, the book as the student walks out. But, you know, we could be here till tomorrow about talking about a little bit of independence. There isn't a classroom that you go into, Mr. Kelly referred to it, that the homework isn't posted, or we communicate with Dr. Craighead, one way, she gives the homework out on Monday for all five nights, you happen to put it on the whiteboard every morning, you put it as the students are leaving the class, because it's based on their performance. So, you know, as a teacher myself, I don't really want somebody to tell me, uh, you know, on Wednesday, nobody got the lesson, but I sent something home on Monday that says, what's the homework going to be for five days? But the communication is there when it's failing, and teachers, you know, perhaps everybody would like to hear, there's one vehicle, that everyone's going to see what the homework is. What we want to know is that the teachers are communicating to the students, and then when you leave each classroom, there's a different way that the homework expectations are, are given to students.
And I think we're looking for a way that parents, as part of the parent-student partnership, can access that information to ensure that what's supposed to be getting done is getting done.
So, I think Mr. Kelly's...
If I might just bore you with one quick story, this summarizes, at least for my son. And I'm not suggesting that my son's experience is typical, but here goes. Big, big history exam, so I, I volunteered to prep him over the weekend, so I know this is a big exam tray, we gotta make sure that, um, we're ready for this exam. So, we're talking about this all week. Saturday morning, say, okay, ready to go, let's, let's get started. So, let's open the history book. He says, the history book? See, yeah, the history book. Man, we should use that as a guy. Oh, I left that in my locker. So, here's my point. It's that I, I understand that we're encouraging students, as they progress in high school, to be more and more independent, but at the same time, there's still the need for that parent support, and, and you need that information in order to be effective at that. Ms. Varela?
Yeah, uh, that's what I, I thought, the same kind of thing I thought we were getting sidetracked with, when you had asked, you know, when you had asked, where are we getting, you know, what, what are the forms of communication for that? So, I mean, right now, and I feel, at least for the, at the K, I'll say at the K-five level, you know, that really is EdLine, where, you know, you would go on that teacher's site, and that's where teachers would post, you know, this is our weekly spelling, this is what the homework, or even, even if they don't, and I'll, and to follow up with Superintendent Gormly, or, Jim Walker, to your request, it might not be that they said, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna post it every single night, but this is, this is how our, this is our, as, as Superintendent Sheen said, this is our overview, and we do, you know, Monday, Monday, the homework packet goes home, like, you know, there's an overview there. And now, with that said, just like Mr. Kelly said, there are some, there are some teachers who are like unbelievable on EdLine, and can give you everything you want, and you could go in on a weekly basis and see, you know, with the quizzes, and where your kid's at, and blah, blah, blah. And then you could go on someone else's page, and there's barely anything there. You know, I mean, it does, it does, it, you know. So, so I agree where, you know, if you have a student who, you know, especially, you know, in, in the early years, that has any kind of a, you know, an issue where like, you know, the organizational and all that stuff, and you're, you know, needs to be worked on, and, you know, you're just, you're just making sure that he's on top, he or she's on top of it, or whatever. You know, just having, and here's my thing, too, I don't think EdLine is, is teacher-friendly. So, not to say that I agree, that every single night, they should be like, okay, is my, is my, you know, whatever, online page up to date with everything that's going on, but I just think that if the platforms you use are more user-friendly, like, I can, I agree with him, Google Classroom, you can tell, teachers are using it more, because it's easier to use, I think it's, it's more user-friendly to the student, to everything, um, maybe that will happen, so that, so that, and it will be easier for the parent to go and get that. You know, it's twofold, that EdLine isn't easy for the teachers, and it isn't easy for the parents to access that information quickly. And, um, I mean, I, I think, anyway, and that's, that's what we've had. So, I, I, so this, I agree with both, both points, where I do think more information needs to be up there, so that teachers, so that parents can go on and say, hey, don't you have a test tomorrow, or don't you have this, or whatever? Because every kid's different, we all know that. But at the same time, be the happy medium that they don't have to spend two hours after school every day, upload, you know, updating that page. So, I don't know. Yeah.
Okay. So, that's the high school. Uh, middle school and elementary school, same question. What information is available to parents, and where?
So, the, for the middle school, it's the same answer as the high school. The same, they, they're, the requirements for posting on EdLine are the same as the high school.
So, progress reports, report cards, and grades below C minus?
Well, that's a, that's a practice. It's not grades below C minus, as far as what the EdLine requirement is.
So, it's a practice at the high school, but not at the middle school?
Um, I can't answer whether that's a practice, but what, what I'm saying is, it's not an EdLine requirement. Um, it's a practice, it's a practice in the elementary schools that a progress report is sent to parents. It's not, it's not posted on, you know, it's not, it's not, parents can't access it electronically. But, um, students in, in fourth and fifth grade, um, receive progress reports at the elementary level. So, it's a practice. I'm just not sure how, um, how it's posted, and how that's communicated to parents at the middle school.
Well, I, can I just, I can answer, as a parent, okay, at the middle school. So, progress reports and, and, and report cards at the middle and the high, they are not posted on any sec, on, on EdLine. That gets, that's, that, that gets sent out by Ms. McReynolds at Pierce, as an alert, like, enclosed is your son's progress report. So, you get that in an email, um, and same thing with report cards. So, you, but if I went to their webpage, that would, that same progress report, or even if I went to Miguel's, my son Miguel's web EdLine page, it wouldn't be there. So, the, the, how it goes, progress report, progress report, those are emailed out. Um, and that, and in some ways, I'll say this much, the good thing about that is it gets straight to you. Like, you're scrolling down your email, and you're like, oop, there's your son, you know, you don't have to be like, oh, I want to see the progress report, what's my EdLine account, what's my password, timed out, you know? So, I, in some ways, that's a good thing. And I know, Mr. Kelly, you had just said, in, in the future, the progress report wouldn't go out to like, the parent via email, it would be posted in the parent portal, or whatever. But that's all, but again, that needs to be user-friendly, and parents need to remind themselves of what they have to do to go on there, because it's progress report time. Yeah? So, anyway, that's the answer of that, so.
Elementary level?
At the elementary level, um, so, as far as requirements for postings on EdLine, teachers, um, give an overview of their, um, classroom projects, and classroom events, and activities. Um, they are also not required to post homework, though many teachers do. Uh, many teachers also post their assignments now through Google Classroom, um, or through other, through other methods in the classroom, some of which Superintendent Gormly mentioned. Um, teachers are also...
Google Classroom information is available to parents?
Um, the students have, have a login, so parents can log in with the student. There isn't a parent, there isn't a parent login, that the, the students get the login. The, um, also on EdLine, teachers, um, are required to post resource links. So, it might be a link to the, um, everyday math program, so that parents can, they, they receive information on how to access the online programs, but they, they may have a link to, to, um, additional programs online. As far as the grading goes for the elementary, um, elementary, um, level, um, it, it will be a challenge moving forward because of our standards-based reporting system. So, um, when, when we do standards-based reporting, we're reporting on where students are towards meeting the standards. So, the teachers are not averaging the grades as they are at the middle and high school levels. So, we're going to have to find a way to communicate about student progress. Parents, in that parents will not be accessing, um, the parent portal, and seeing that the students have, you know, an eighty-five in social studies, if you know what I'm saying. So, so students are assessed on, on how they demonstrate proficiency in meeting a standard. It might be a, um, a, a proj, it might be a project-based learning, where the teacher is, um, assessing, um, based on observational data, um, or anecdotal data. We might come up with, um, a system for, um, representing student work in portfolios online. I'm just, you know, making that as a suggestion. So, I'm not sure where we're going with that around, um, the teacher communication, but, um, when we do standards-based reporting at the elementary level, we, um, we have benchmarks, but, um, we're not averaging grades. So, if a student is not meeting the standard earlier in the term, um, but does meet that standard at the end, then they, they, they've basically met the standard. It's not a matter of they, they received an A, a B, or a C. It's, it's a new system, it's not really new, but it's a different way of reporting. And it's, um, it gives more information about a child, um, more information to the parents around where the child is relative to meeting standards.
We've probably spent enough time on this. So, as a follow-up, I'd like by school, the number of, the percentage of teachers that are meeting the minimum EdLine requirements, because it still sounds like there is inconsistent participation. With, and, and with regard to that, it's, um, that are participating in EdLine, meeting the minimum requirements, in making information accessible to parents online, which was where we started. So, whatever the minimum requirement is at the elementary level, at the middle school level, at the high school? Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Sure. Maybe I would, maybe it could be done, Mary, where it's, uh, in progress, because I don't know if by the next meeting, we'd really be able to have a deep understanding of that.
I, I, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to separate the future state from the current state.
No, I agree.
And I, right now, I'd like some current state information, because we, we've been having this discussion for a very long time.
We can do, we can answer your question, because Assistant Superintendent Sheen, as Mr. Kelly said, makes an expectation of administrators. And, um, what drove this was, uh, parents wanting, uh, to see the grades. And so, the good news story here, not to try to, uh, uh, turn it around, but you could see Mr. Kelly's reporting about the high school, we're moving towards, I dealt, you and I had, uh, discussions with parents, and, again, perhaps not as fast as you and I would want it, but where, with security, and, uh, that nothing's going to go wrong, and that we have the full teacher's support. We, we're going to start a pilot of twenty-five, and we have fifty or more, and by mid-year, we're looking to have all the teachers, uh, ha, moving towards parents being able to see the students' grades. That, you know, you, we want to know about EdLine, and the question is, when is EdLine gone, and these communication, uh, devices being used?
Well, it, it, that's part of it. What parents are saying is, I would like the information that I need to support my child in real time. That's what they're saying. So, it's grades, it's homework, I mean, we, we've already talked about it, so.
Can I just make one extra comment?
Ms. Varela, yes.
So, two, just two, two things. I will say that, um, so, I currently have a senior at the high school, and I receive real time. I received two of them today, on tests that occurred this week, um, because those teachers implement that program that Mr. Kelly was speaking about. Um, and it's, you know, I don't tend to pay as much attention, because my feeling is that this child is leaving me in a couple of months, and I expect there'd be some independence and some responsibility for that child, who I will not be getting any progress reports next year, and paying a lot of money, um, for that person to be successful. But I do appreciate the efforts.
Right. You're not even entitled to the grades.
And, exactly, unless you, unless they sign a piece of paper.
That's correct.
Right, which you, you know, that's another conversation. Um, but I do, I do, I do receive them, and I have since last year. So, I do think there are teachers that are really trying at the high school to make that accessible. No, no, I know, I know you know that.
This whole, this whole discussion came about because there are teachers that are doing a fabulous job of providing this information at every level. And the question was, why can't we make sure that that happens across the board?
Right. So, I think the other thing going forward, just to think about, is an expectation. I have been every kind of parent you can imagine, over-the-top parent, trying to be calm parent, trying, you know, and so I understand that need to want to know things, but I think setting some expectation for parents as well. Yes, and I'm gonna say it one more time, if you're that concerned, right? And you can build relationships with teachers, I've done it over all these years. You can call them, you can email them, you can, you can work with teachers to establish relationships for children that are really struggling if you're not having access to information that is readily accessible. Having some baseline of expectations of how much information is enough. Some parents want everything, some parents want minimal. I just think that that's a really important discussion to think about going forward. Yes, you should be able to access that information, but for some people will never be enough.
I just want the minimum across the board, that's what I want.
We're always gonna, I know, you're always gonna have variety though, I mean, I, well.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
And I just, because this issue has been going on in the school committee for quite a while. Think of it this way, if you have a child who's at home sick, they can't find out their homework and they're out for three weeks, that doesn't help academic achievement. That's why the homework on ed line across the board should be there. And we've been talking about it for a long time. I'm not as concerned about the test scores because I know I'll pick up that phone and talk to that teacher if there's a problem and I haven't known about it. But homework is pretty basic. And the days of, can you run this backpack to Johnny's house because he's home with a broken leg and you live near him are long gone. So homework, bare minimum. And I was just saying, I didn't know if they could have that information by the time we meet in two weeks, but clearly the administrators should have a sense. And we should be able to say to parents, when you have a sick kid, you're going to be able to find out what homework is. I, I do think that that is normal to expect.
Okay. Superintendent Gormly, what's happening across the district?
Thank you, Ms. Kelly and Assistant Superintendent Sheehan.
And you thought that was going to be easy.
I, I told you, you were going to get more information than you had asked for. We have, um, open houses, we want to talk about communication. My goal is a hundred percent, uh, participation, parents and guardians showing up at open house. Tomorrow night is the Tucker Open House. Next week Cunningham Glover and Collicott. Uh, both, uh, high school principal Jet and middle school principal Spalding called me the morning after open house and said outstanding, amazing. Uh, response, uh, at the high school auditorium was phenomenal. And, uh, Dr. Spalding said the middle school, so attendance is huge. Everybody's paying attention. Uh, I'm going to ask, uh, we had school committee members there, but I'm going to ask briefly for member Bagley Jones to talk about Monday night's Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition event and talk about October fourth.
I would love to. So Monday night Laurie Stillman presented the results of both our, uh, the Milton High School's, uh, Youth Risk Behavior Survey and also the results from parents of eight hundred parents who completed a survey online. Um, and it was interesting, it was a packed room, the event was sold out, meaning there weren't any chairs left. Um, it was fascinating and she did this before, and what was the name of the other woman, Ms. Skier?
Dr. Mayhew.
She was fabulous too. Um, it, it, it was a fascinating event, but the one, so the next event is even more important. It's October fourth, I've been talking about it and I'm hoping parents are getting this message. It's for parents K through twelve, residents, school staff, town staff, anybody who wants to come, we want to see them there. And it's to talk, it's called, um, Parenting Your Child in Risky Times. And the Health and Wellness Subcommittee of the School Committee has partnered with the Milton Substance Use Coalition. Uh, Beth Israel Deacon's Hospital is one of the partners. The Mark Susie Foundation has underwritten some of the, um, expenses and it's going to be a great event. There are going to be several tables from folks up at the high school, um, where we'll be doing some different activities. Um, and there is an interactive activity for parents called Hidden in Plain Sight, where it's a room set up like a teenager's bedroom and you go in and you try to find all the, where drugs and alcohol could be hidden. That's five thirty to six thirty, um, out in the hallways and in the classroom near here. And then six thirty to eight thirty, our three panel speakers, one of which is Laurie Stillman. And I'm sorry, I've forgotten the other two women's names. But it is going to be a great event, the highlight of the year, the social function to go to and to be seen at. Anyway, so I hope everybody is spreading the word. I know the principals have been really pushing notices home, um, but I think, oh, and the reason we called it, Have You Ever Thought, No, Not My Child? Is because we're trying to get out of the blame and shame. It's like a kid doesn't decide to do heroin when he's eighteen. You know, there are things that lead up to that and that's why learning how to talk to your kids from a young age about difficult topics is really, really important. So really pushing the elementary parents. And we, we think that there's a lot for everybody to learn and it will be done in a very non-shaming, non-blaming manner. Because we don't get anywhere by just blaming parents for their kids drinking or doing drugs, that doesn't help. But just really trying to reach as many parents as we can. So everybody at this table needs to tell five people and then offer to pick them up and drive them to and from. And that includes those people over there too. I think it'll be a good, um, event though. So I hope I see you there. I'll be taking notes.
Yeah, before, um, Superintendent Gormly goes on, just two things I want to echo on both points. Um, I went to both open houses as a parent of a high schooler and a parent of a middle schooler. And, um, I just want to echo about how well-done they, they were by the administration and by all of the teachers. Um, and the feedback, when I was, they were back-to-back nights, Pierce and the high school. And the feedback, you know, that I as a school committee member got from parents at both those, um, those schools, you know, um, just, I'd say, you know, better than ever, um, so on point. Love all the teachers on the teams and the classrooms, I mean, really not a bad word at all. Um, so I just wanted to echo how impressive, like, the teachers were, staying on time, getting a good, good sense of the curriculum. I mean, very, very informative and, um, very well-communicated open house, so I just want to say that. And secondly, I, I want to commend, um, I'm new to the Health and Wellness, um, Subcommittee this year, but I want to commend the work that Health and Wellness did in, in qua, in, in this October fourth thing in conjunction with the Milton, um, Milton Substance, is it Substance Youth?
Youth.
Yeah, yeah, Coalition. I, I, I also think it's going, I think that the October fourth night and all of the, the action steps moving forward based on the intel that was given by the survey. So again, I want to echo, um, uh, and give credit to Health and Wellness and Superintendent Gormly for letting students take this survey. And then for, I want to thank the parents, if people are watching, the parents in the Milton community because I think the information gathered is going to be so helped, was very honest. And information that was given by administrators at this school, by coaches at this school, by athletic directors. You know, I really, it gi, it gives you a feeling that it was, you know, definitely not done in vain. And I do think more, more positive action steps are going to be able to be taken from the town as a whole, from the police and the schools and the clergy and all these different groups that I think, I think will help, um, you know, tackle this issue and make progress moving forward. So again, uh, uh, to echo, uh, Ms. Bagley Jones, the October fourth and the other, the other events that they have, that these groups have moving forward, um, they're really good for everyone to come to. Even if you don't think, oh, I don't have to go to that, my cat, child. The information that has been gathered is really eye-opening and really important, so.
Uh, uh, in closing that, I wish that we had had seventy, seven hundred and fifty parents, two nights in a row, to hear Laurie Stillman and Dr. Marjorie Skier. Her, the research she has on the brain development and making choices, uh, I, it was just phenomenal. I guess they're going to do some kind of filming and, uh, it was just unbelievable. And the data, um, about this town's children and the issues that we all have to work together with the children and the families, um, I have to tell you, the response has been unbelievable. So we look forth, forward to the fourth. Uh, very briefly, uh, we, uh, I think the best press that the Tucker new playground addition got was when the site council presented here and this school committee has been very, uh, involved. You've got your individual invitations?
I think we might need medical attention at the end of the table.
I know, we could, kid?
On, um, September twenty-eighth at five thirty, the Tucker Playground reception, followed by their potluck dinner for their new playground, for their new playground area. The response, you have to see the children's faces. So you've all been invited, I hope you can be there. Um, a highlight in Milton, celebrate Milton, Sunday, October second, at Pierce between twelve and four. That's a walk-through event, um, and again, uh, bringing this whole town together in community. Next Friday is a very unusual day in Milton. Uh, it's when our Japanese partner schools arrive and there'll be four hundred and fifty additional students at Milton High School. And, um, last night, uh, the other night, I saw Principal Jet talking to Police Chief King about where the thirteen buses are going to park. It used to be a two-day event and we've decided to consolidate on one day. And you have to, I think Chairman Walker has seen it, you have to see the Japan, the students from Japan getting off the bus, not speaking English, some speaking English, our children not speaking Japanese, the exchange of the gifts, more downs and smiling. Them going in with their partners to see the Japanese, the students from Japan entertaining, our marching band entertaining. And then off to seven classes with your fellow student from Japan. It's an experience of a lifetime and that's going to happen, uh, on September thirtieth. Briefly, on October fifth, um, Chairman, uh, Member Varela, do you want to talk about International Walk and Bike to School Day?
Yeah, so I, I was going to cover that in my transportation, but I'll, I'll say it now as happened. Yeah, we'll hold it for that, so.
Great. Um, circle your calendars, uh, we've talked a lot about funding of athletics. Milton High School's athletic program, uh, equal to the taxpayers' contribution, is almost the same amount of money that Milton High School parents raise at Swing for Sports. So I cannot say enough, every month we meet with the boosters, our administrative team, uh, Principal Jet. And these are tireless workers. So think, Swing, Swing for Sports, tennis and golf at Wallaston Golf Course, they are, um, unbelievable donors to give us the golf course for this event on October eleventh. Uh, look for information on that. Circle your calendars, um, uh, just like a holiday for every single family is the Monster Dash on October thirtieth. Um, in my blast, I'm going to start giving updates. Mr. Walker serves on our Inclusion Task Force, which was an offshoot of our PCG Special Ed Study last year. Uh, parents, uh, teachers, um, I'd say that it, you had got out to a phenomenal start last year with the work of the Inclusion Task Force. They have a survey they're going to send to all staff. Um, another one of our guardian angels, uh, Boston College Professor Laura O'Dwyer is taking that survey and turning it into a real survey, that the data, uh, will be very valuable to us. Doing that again, um, at no cost. I cannot speak highly enough of, uh, her work with the Milton Public Schools. The CPAC had their monthly meeting last night. In closing, we have had some transportation issues, I mentioned it the last time. Uh, we're working on those, right, Assistant Superintendent Pavlichek? And Jake Smith and, uh, the parents and guardians, patients, we're working on that daily and we're trying to, uh, close all of those loopholes. In closing, uh, Pat Desmond is another guardian angel of the Milton Public Schools. And, um, the Milton Times is excited, they're offering a new app. I'm going to put it out in my email blast, The Milton Insider, which will offer news about the community. The app is available for Apple and Android users and more. I'm going to have more in my email blast about it, but Pat Desmond was very, very excited, right, Milton Times reporter? About the new app. Uh, we're talking about all this new technology. Um, closing, one more date, uh, if you come in to sc, uh, the high school after school till six o'clock at night, you'll, uh, Assistant Superintendent Sheehan stopped in her tracks yesterday when she heard the high school students singing, uh, Coming Cinderella, uh, that first week of November, so, uh, save those dates.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
Just a quick question, what is and who is on the Inclusion Task Force? Cause it's different than CPAC.
Email blast.
Oh, okay, I'll wait.
CPAC, email blast, Inclusion Task Force, email blast and a summary of their last meeting.
Okay.
Dr. Pavlichek?
With regard to transportation, we did send out a, a notice this afternoon. Canton Avenue is going to be having some final repaving in the next three days, Thursday, Friday and Monday. And Hillside Street is going to be having pave, final paving on Tuesday and Wednesday. And even if you don't live on those streets, the bus that your child may be riding on may have been going down that street on its prior run. And to the extent they're going to try to keep all the roads open for the buses and have details there so buses can get through, it almost certainly will cause some delays with a couple of our bus routes. And again, if a Pierce bus route gets delayed, that's going to, uh, domino onto Cunningham, Collicott and, and Tucker Glover. So, um, that, we just found out this afternoon that this is the schedule for, uh, the repaving over the next five days. So we ask your patience, it's gonna, it, it will almost certainly affect things. Um, and even if your children don't ride the bus, uh, if you go to the Glover School, you'll find that Canton Avenue between the library and the Glover is going to be one of the paving projects, which will certainly affect tru, the Glover traffic and those who drive and drop their kids off and so forth. So, um, the, it's going to be a, a little interesting in the paving world over the next five days. But we've just found out this afternoon, we sent out a blast to all, uh, staff and parents and so forth. And we hope that, uh, we hope it goes better than we're afraid it might.
Can I just repeat those dates?
Um, it's this Thursday, um, and this Thursday, uh, the southern section of, uh, Canton Ave, uh, Hemlock Drive out to one thirty-eight, uh, Friday morning, it's Apple to Hemlock on Canton. Uh, Monday is Canton, uh, between the library, between Reed's Dale and, and Brook by, by Glover. Uh, Tuesday and Wednesday are, are Hillside Street in the Scotswoods area. And again, we have buses that go through there and that's, those buses coming from some of the furthest reaches of town to schools have enough trouble making their runs if they run into, uh, delays out there, that will, that will cause an issue. So, um, we've been in contact with DPW, we've been in contact with the police. They're going to try to have details there and let our buses through, but, um, construction is construction. It is likely to affect us.
Eric Caudill, our athletic director, and for more details, you can read the blast. The fall season is off to a great start with many Wildcat teams playing extremely well in the first few weeks. The girls cross-country team, the girls soccer, the football and golf teams will all look to be in the hunt for league titles. The boys soccer and cross-country and girls volleyball and field hockey are all competitive and will be strong contenders for postseason fall, uh, for postseason play this fall. Cross-country, five and zero, football, two and zero, girls soccer, five and one. Golf, three and two, volleyball, three and four. Field hockey, two and three and one tie, cross-country, two and three. Boys soccer, zero and six.
So the cross-country's, was that girls cross-country first and boys cross-country second?
Um, boys cross-country, two and three, and I, the girls cross-country, five and zero. It's the way the athletic director sent it.
Good.
Can I add to that? The field hockey team, the girls, won against Braintree and I sent a picture of it to Ally and she was so excited because it was Braintree, I guess they're one of the hardest teams to beat in field hockey. But that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Chairs report, so our first item is cemetery vigil. And as some of you may know, the cemetery has a Holocaust memorial that consists of a series of sculptures. Uh, over the weekend, one of those sculptures was vandalized. So, uh, Rabbi Benjamin and the Interfaith Clergy Association are, uh, hosting a vigil tomorrow evening uh, from five forty-five to six thirty. Uh, they have asked the school committee to cosponsor that vigil. So I think that's entirely appropriate, so I would move that, uh, we cosponsor the vigil tomorrow evening at the cemetery.
Second?
Moved by Walker, seconded by Bagley Jones, any discussion? Dr. Craighead?
Um, I'm very much in support of this. I know the Board of Selectmen are also, um, a cosponsor of this. Um, this is a highly, uh, disturbing, um, occurrence, although we don't know exactly why it occurred. But, um, I'll just leave it at that. I think it's important for us to cosponsor.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
And if I might?
And if I might finish?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, so the matter has been referred to the Milton Police and, uh, they're investigating. And, uh, they may in fact have some leads we learned, uh, recently. And I would urge all the citizens of Milton, as many of you are available to turn out tomorrow evening, five forty-five to six thirty.
I want to thank Chairman Walker. We communicated the vigil to all staff. I said to Chairman Walker, within a minute, I heard from staff that will be attending. And then under his guidance, we sent out tonight to all Milton Public Schools. And then under his guidance, we sent out tonight to all Milton Public School parents. And Reverend Hall Kirkham just missed the 7 o'clock citizen speak, and as soon as I told him that you had moved it on the agenda, he had another meeting to go. He's head, I believe he's the president of the NECA, but he's from St. Michael's Church. So he wanted me to publicly thank you for putting it on the agenda tonight.
Great. Okay, fiscal '18 budget process. So there are a number of things that are occurring in parallel that we're trying to orchestrate. As you know, as the finance subcommittee members know, we had Town Administrator Anne-Marie Fagan and Town Accountant Amy Dexter, who together with our own Dr. Pavlicek have constituted a budget working group that last year put together a budget with the, obviously with the input of the school committee and the selectmen. And we expect that that process will be replicated this year. What we're trying to accomplish though is to ensure that the discussion of the override question, should we have an override, should we not, occur much earlier than it did last year. So in trying to bring that about, I met with the Chair of the Warrant Committee and trading phone calls with Katie Conlon, Chair of the Selectmen. But what we've proposed, schedule-wise, is to host a joint Selectmen Warrant Committee, School Committee meeting on November 9th. The reason that that date seems appropriate is that two questions that we would need to answer, or those bodies would need information from are, what's the certified free cash, which we expect to know by mid-October, according to Ms. Dexter, and updating the five-year financial forecast for the town and the schools, which Finance Subcommittee is working on and will be asking the school committee to approve, and I hope that the Selectmen are also working on their end. But those two things should be helpful in trying to answer the question of whether or not an override is appropriate. So that's the schedule we've proposed. Will be, the school committee will certainly be meeting with the Warrant Committee on November 9th, and we hope the Selectmen will join us. And then finally, December 14th is the proposed date for the school committee detailed presentation to the Warrant Committee about the budget. So according to the schedule?
Do you see those dates again?
November 9th?
Oh, okay.
Joint Selectmen Warrant Committee, School Committee, and December 14th for School Committee detailed presentation of the budget to the Warrant Committee. According to the schedule that we distributed last meeting, we would be approving the budget on December 7th, so Lee Michael and I thought that the following week would be the appropriate time to do the detailed presentation. So that's our plan. I'll be keeping you updated as things progress, but as I said, the objective is just to have particularly the go-no-go decision on the override discussion start earlier.
Question?
Yes.
Regarding the budget process, so the finance subcommittee meetings are going to be every Tuesday morning at 7:15?
Every Tuesday morning, 7:15.
Okay, so that will start working out some of the, yeah, okay.
That's the plan.
Great.
And we have a new member, Ella Craighead is now a member of the finance subcommittee.
Yeah. I was just going to, may I say?
Yes.
I was making a suggestion, I know 7:15 is our regular time, but I don't know if sometimes as you get closer, if you sometimes have a meeting at night. I know not everyone comes to the meetings or, they might want to come, so if we think about it, there's a time, might it change it to an evening or something just to accommodate different schedules? I don't know. Just, just putting that out there. I know 7:15 doesn't work for everyone, I know it works for, for the finance subcommittee, but just putting it out there for a thought.
We'll do our best to be as inclusive as we've always been.
Okay.
Finance Subcommittee. So first item is the 18 through 22, fiscal 18 through 22 capital plans. This is comprised of a technology capital plan and a facilities capital plan. And I believe that Dr. Craighead has a friendly amendment, so I'm going to move approval.
Second?
It's moved by Walker, seconded by Craighead, and ask Dr. Craighead to make her a friendly amendment.
For the technology capital request, Schedule H, I would make a motion, can I make a motion?
No, it's a friendly amendment.
A friendly amendment, sorry. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to flip number three in terms of the priorities, that is replacement of obsolete smart boards, and number four, ongoing Chromebook replacement. Just because it, it occurs to me that it is, the greater number of students will be affected certainly by the Chromebook replacement, and it's literally technology that's in their hands as opposed to some smart boards. And given that, if there is no override, we're not going to be able to fund all of these things, we're only going to be able to fund in, in terms of priority, I would think that Chromebooks should move up the list.
I accept your friendly amendment. Any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
So these priorities, did I miss that? Who came up with these priorities?
So these priorities, the, these plans were developed, the facilities plan was developed by Bill Ritchie and reviewed by the Facilities Subcommittee and the Finance Subcommittee. The technology plan was created by Dr. Angela Burke, Bob Patterson, the superintendent and the assistant superintendents, and reviewed by the Finance Subcommittee. So the, the priorities were proposed by the preparers, but obviously can be amended by us.
Mm-hmm. No, I just, and I have no problem with what you just suggested, but I'm just thinking if there's a reason, like for example, to have the smart boards done before the Chromebooks because the smart boards are up on the wall for the classrooms, I just don't know how that priority list got there in terms of changing.
So the discussion was that there are a small number of smart boards that are still, that are obsolete because of the software that they run on. And the thought was, we should make sure that we upgrade those. And, and I think that's still a worthy objective. I agree with Dr. Craighead, however, that if, if we're talking about prioritization and the likelihood that we won't get all of these, then it's probably more impactful if the Chromebooks get funded than if we lose a few or still end up with a few obsolete smart boards. So that was the thinking.
Yeah, no, I have no problem with that. I just want to make sure that I understood where the priorities came from, because there might be a reason that I wouldn't know about as to why that was more of a priority.
Yeah, that's the reason that number one and two are priorities, because they're infrastructure things that actually support everything else that's on the list.
Right, exactly, okay. Makes sense.
So on the motion, as amended?
Can I just ask one other question?
Yeah.
This, this is just, I know this is, but this is recommendation for, for next year's budget, right?
This is a recommendation for the, primarily for the fiscal '18 capital plan, but it's a five-year capital plan.
Five out of five year, okay, all right, all right.
On the motion as amended, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Budget line item adjustments. Do you have a document? Yes, is it in here?
It's right behind the capital plans. Girl, three pages folded together.
So this is our attempt to adjust line items from those that were initially approved by the school committee, based on updated information. So except for the $1 million that the town meeting awarded, $950,000 to fund full-day kindergarten, and $50,000 for a history teacher at the middle school, their recommendation, we don't have to take it, but normally if they offer the money for a specific purpose, we take it. So apart from that $1 million, the bottom line figure does not change, but based on the work of Dr. Pavlicek and his team, these are the recommendations for how we should readjust the line items. So, and I would move approval.
Second?
Moved by Walker, seconded by Varela. Any discussion? On the motion, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Approval of vendor warrants. Dr. Pavlicek, do we have one that's signed or two that's signed?
We have one to sign, we have three to approve, two that have been signed. You have them on your motion sheet.
Two that have been signed?
Yes.
Okay.
There are three on your.
So as is my practice, I will move to approve those that have been signed and defer the one that has not.
It's almost signed, I just need one.
All most is not there. So move to approve warrant number 10 dated September 8th, 2016, in the amount of 98,000, 98,000?
Yep.
98,000. That seems small, but 98,000?
It was a small warrant.
$319 and 29 cents.
If you promise the next ones would be bigger.
Thank you. Moved by Walker, seconded by Donahue. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Move to approve warrant number 11 dated September 15th, 2016, in the amount of 499,629 and 16 cents.
Second?
Moved by Walker, seconded by Varela. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Transportation and traffic.
Okay, so this will be very brief because we did have one brief meeting before the Milton Substance Youth Coalition meeting at the hospital on Monday night. It was, it was brief though, because we all had to go up to that. But basically, the two main things that were discussed is that Wednesday, October 5th, which is our district-wide kickoff walk slash bike to school day, is also the international walk to school day. So our MassDOT representative was there, so it kind of all coincided, so, which is great. So we're really working on the 5th to try to have, you know, a big celebration of walking and biking to kind of kick off what we, like I've, I've mentioned before, that every Wednesday be a walk, you know, walk slash bike to school day with the first Wednesday of each month, you know, being maybe some extra special treats, prizes, what have you, that are sponsored by the walk to school slash transportation reps along with the principals and the PTOs of those schools. And each one is going to kind of do their own thing and work together, along with, you know, our, our MassDOT representative, Jana Lindhart, who's there to help them, along with Jake Smith as well. So the pieces are getting into place and we're hoping to have maybe some surprises there on the 5th. We're working on some things and we'll update you after that happens, not in our October meeting. And then we again discuss Glover and the various issues that are going on there. And our next steps with that is that we're actually going to have a meeting and a site visit, hopefully early next week. We're just trying to nail down Chief King, Lieutenant Albar, and the school administration along with the principals' schedules to review it, look at it, and discussion, 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 good discussion was had, but there's a lot of things that have to be fleshed out before we take some action steps to see what might be the first good action step in rectifying some of the problems there. So.
In, in your expert opinion, do you think it's fixable?
Um, I, yeah, I'm, I'm going to say, I'm, yes. I mean, and I'll ask Dr. Pavlicek, who's also an expert, to echo that. I mean, there's issues to be worked out. I always think the biggest piece of the puzzle is the cooperation of the parent community. But that's all through education, you know, and no matter what change we recommend and implement, and so the Glover community that's watching, I know that there will be hemming and harring and, but at the end of the day, with all of the, the great minds, including, you know, our Chief of Police and our Chief of Transportation, Dr. Pavlicek, and Lieutenant Gormly, et cetera, et cetera, I think that, yeah, it will be fixable. I do think Glover, I mean, this is only my second year with this, and we've, we've improved Pierce, we've improved the high school flow, and just other, you know, we've brought on this, what, the Safety Patrol, I mean, we've made a lot of good improvements. I'm going to say that Glover, I think, will be thus far more challenging than those, but, but we'll get there, yeah. I'm, I'm just saying now to the Glover community, like, have an open mind, and let the proposals come down, let proposals come down, let's try, because it's all about, in the end of the day, it's all about the safety. So if it takes five more minutes of your time, maybe even 10 more minutes of your time, I pick up and drop off, you know, we want to be mindful that it's all about the safety of the students, so, here we go.
Well said.
Okay.
Approval of minutes, move to approve the June 15th, 2016 minutes.
Second?
Moved by Walker, seconded by Craighead?
Yes.
Any discussion? Dr. Donahue?
In the final paragraph of the final page of the third line, is a typo, I believe it's Mr. Walker, in the middle of the sentence.
That Mr. Kerr, it says.
Oh, right. Okay. Mr. Kerr.
Mr. Kerr, yeah.
Any other discussions?
None.
On the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Next meeting agenda items. Further updates on headline. And Assistant Superintendent Sheehan, did you want to do standards-based reporting next meeting or the meeting after? You mentioned doing a more detailed presentation on that.
I think I volunteered that for her. Could we get back to you about which meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
You would also want a day in October, we'll speak to staff at PCG update.
Yes.
So we'll do one and then the other.
Okay. Sounds good. The audience is empty, except for the Milton Times reporter.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You had mentioned something at the last meeting about the site councils and thinking about changing their presentations.
Yes.
Any progress on that thought?
Yes, I believe so. Superintendent Gormly?
Chairman Walker spoke to the principals. I said the telephone message should come right from the source, so we're going to, we have a leadership meeting Tuesday morning, so I'll pass a schedule by you and the whole school committee. They agreed, middle and high, two elementary, two elementary, they understood the expectation, this would be about budget, prior, sitting, site council members, and then come later in the year with their accomplishments in date.
Correct.
So I'll, I'll work with you on a schedule.
So I would expect that those would be the next three meetings.
Okay, great.
But drawing on Member Varela's suggestion, two at a time, and I asked for high school and middle school first.
Good, that's great.
I think they have those site council elections, and so I think they're all trying to just get through open house next week, and then I'll have those for you.
Great.
Question for the agenda?
Yes.
I don't know where this would fit in, but our school committee goals?
Yes.
Which we talked about?
Yes, thank you. So at the October 5th meeting, Glenn Kuchar will be joining us for an hour again, so we could start at 5:30 or 6:00, whichever your preference is, but he's willing to come back and help us. And I'll send out the, the rough drafts of what we did, but the objective would be to try to finalize the goals and convert them into SMART goal formats.
And that is October 5th?
Yeah, it's, we have a meeting scheduled, so we just, we would just meet earlier.
Right, 6 to 7? You said 5:30.
Well, whichever, if you think, if we think we can do it in an hour, then it's 6:00. If you think we might need a little more time, it's 5:30.
I don't know if we can do it in an hour, I just don't think I can be here before 6:00 because of work.
Okay, 6:00 it is.
I mean.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
So the other thing, and for the purposes of that exercise, the other thing I would like for all of you to do is look at the fiscal '14 through '16 goals, because effectively we could be dropping all of those goals, which may or may not be a good idea. So this is both a thought process about, of the, I think we have six that we developed at the retreat, but we have 10 or 11 that we have that are still operative, so we're going to have to reconcile that. So give that some thought as well.
Are we going to get that all sent out to us?
Yes, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy for non-union personnel and negotiation strategy for MEA and ASME, the discussion of which in public session would be detrimental to our negotiating positions. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Eberhard?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Mr. Walker, yes. We're adjourned.